All right. Good afternoon. Today is May first, two thousand and twenty-three. This is the three o'clock P. M. Ryan County Commission meeting. A lot of folks with us today, so welcome. We're glad that you're here today. It's been the tradition of this board. We do a couple of things as we begin our meetings. We're going to have a a we'll have our pledge of allegiance. We also have what's called a solemnizing prayer, and we always define that for you. That that means it's for us. It's not for you. What we do here, we we seek wisdom in doing the best thing, making the best decisions for the county as possible. So we've got our chaplain. He is on by Zoom with us today. Is he there, April?
I'm here.
All right. Thank you, Michael. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, we come to today behalf of our county commissioners, your Lord. We thank for the time they spent to prepare this meeting tonight. We pray your blessing in a special way, given wisdom and knowledge they need as they have this meeting tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I've been told we have some members of a county leadership group with us tonight. I was giving one of them and said, the first time you visit, we make you do the National Anthem for us, leading the National Anthem, but we won't make them do that. If you're part of the county leadership team, how about you guys standing up and we'll we'll recognize you tonight? Come on, I know there's at least all right, three of you. We're welcome. I appreciate them being here. Aaron Church, our county manager believes in yeah, believes in making sure that our management has has good leadership skills. So he's taken it upon himself and they they put together a management training program and and so we appreciate them being part of this. And I think one of the requirements is they have to come to one of the county commission meetings. So welcome. We're glad you're here. We should be done by eleven. So you picked a good night. Yeah. We've got a couple of additions. We've got one that was provided by Sarah and budget amendments. So that'll be added to item M on our consent agenda. Also, let's see, we've got a grant request, a COPs grant request is what it's called. And that will be added as item A C, A C on on our agenda. And then if you guys don't mind, let's pull item W. Item W Shield Badger with Prayer Awareness Month. We'll pull that and add that to the next agenda. And I was going to pull a couple of other ones, but I think I'm I'm just going to leave the rest as it is. All right. Anything else, friends, that we want to change? All right. If not, do we have a motion to approve the agendas amended? All right. All in favor, say aye. All right. All right. So the consent agenda, it's been changed a little bit. Motion to approve the consent agenda. In a second, all in favor, say aye. Do we have anyone? Anyone for public comment? No, thank you, Jay. You have such a servant's heart. Appreciate that. All right. It looks like we have one speaker for public comment, Gary Perry. Yeah, come on up. Thank you for being. Yeah, come on up here and this is Gary Perry, three thousand and three sides road. Welcome. Appreciate you being here.
I'm here basically to support Valerie Steele. I'm one of the tenants out there. I work for Foodline Corporate Pilot for Foodline out there at the Ryan County Airport. And of course, I'm in the guard as well on the other side. So I kind of have a vested interest on what goes on with the county. And of course, I've been a county resident all my life. And I really have nothing to add or take away from anything except for I'm here to support her and what she does. And she's done a great job managing the county airport, and I like where we're going with that. So I would pretty much share that with you guys.
Thank you.
All right, Gary. Thank you. Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, since there are no others, we will move rapidly to item number three. And that's Aviation Management Consulting Group, Valerie. Did you want to come up and make some introductions?
Presentation up. We started this project about sixteen.
Yeah.
We started this project about sixteen months ago. So this is the presentation of everything that's come to fruition during the entire project. You want to take over? Since you have that slide with your pictures and everything.
Yeah. So so the public notice is Valerie Steele. She's director of our airport. And so we're grateful that you're here and you have some guests with us. If you'd introduce them for us.
Sure, no problem. We have David Benner, Managing Consultant, and Katie, I don't want to pronounce it wrong. Gaynor with Cedar Aviation Analyst. They both are C M's, which is Certified Member. It's an aviation designation in AAAE, which is one of the most common ones in aviation. So they're subject matter experts. AMCG is a very large consulting group. And when we did put this project out for bid, I was really excited to see such a large company willing to come in and do G A as well.
Thank you, Valerie. Thank you for being here.
We appreciate the opportunity to be here. I have some this a little bit. Have some slides to get through. We've been working on a lot over the last sixteen months. But just as a quick introduction to who we are, we're making recommendations, obviously, as it relates to the airport. So understanding our background and where we come from. We're based out of Colorado. The company is, we focus on general aviation matters. So we work aviation only at airports and with aviation businesses. As you can see here, we work with aviation oriented agencies from a governmental perspective, associations and other industry stakeholders. But we really focus what differentiates us a little bit is we focus on the general aviation aspect of the aviation industry. So we don't work with airlines. We don't do the commercial service stuff. The those items that people are most accustomed to when they think about aviation. We focus on general aviation aspects. From a team standpoint, you know, education is obviously important. A lot of us have our MBAs related in aviation. We've managed airports. We've managed aviation businesses. We're pilots. We have an airplane. So this is part of what we do on a daily basis for airports across the country. So the things that we're talking about here today from an assessment and PMCDs, primary management compliance documents, rules, minimum standards, rent fees, that's things that we work with on a regular basis with airports all across the country. So we'll just kind of jump into things. I'm going to give a quick, just from a background standpoint of where this is coming from. Then we'll walk through each of the different elements that we worked on. And then our recommendations and happy to answer any questions that may come up. But first, you know, is April twenty-one is when this kind of got started. The RFQ that was sent out related to the safety, operation and governance of the airport. So as we looked at that, that's right in our wheelhouse. And there's some things that we really want to focus on as relates to to the airport. One, the you know, from a county perspective, you're the airport sponsor. You've accepted federal dollars. You're included in the National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems. So in accepting those federal dollars, there are certain grant assurances that you have to comply with. There's thirty-nine of them. And here you see only four. And you know, it's a fair question, why only those four? When there's an issue at airports from a informal or formal basis, Part thirteen, Part sixteen, it the grant assurances are then referenced in those complaints. Four of the sponsor assurances, these four come up more than fifteen percent of the time. So operation and maintenance, that's that the county will operate and maintain a safe and serviceable airport. That's about eighteen percent of the time, economic nondiscrimination, that you're going to be available to all types, kinds and classes of activity at the airport. That's seventy percent of the time. Sixty percent is exclusive rights that you can't grant an exclusive right to one entity on your federally obligated airport. And then on the fee and rental structure, that's fifteen percent of the time. That's the lowest of all of them. But that you'll maintain the airport as self sustaining as possible financially, given circumstances that exist. So all of the different elements that we're going to be talking about here, and we'll just jump to that. Each of those related back to those four key sponsor assurances for the the more important and highly referenced ones. So we'll talk about each of these elements specifically. But first, from an assessment standpoint, then the PMCD is the primary management compliance documents. It's a companion of documents. We really focused on the most common, too, rules and regulations and minimum standards, updating those for the airport. We looked at the airport advisory body bylaws and then into the rent and fee studies as well. So element four and five, that relates to that last sponsor assurance twenty-four. The advisory body bylaws, the PMCDs and the assessment kind of look at all four of those airport sponsor assurances. But just from a schedule standpoint, you know, this started, obviously, sixteen Valerie mentioned sixteen months ago or so. We started with the agreement, got the information request. Valerie and her team were really helpful in us understanding the intricacies of this airport. As I mentioned, we work with airports all over the country, but we need to understand the nuances of this airport, understand the agreements, understand the different aspects from an operational standpoint. So really dove into all of the documents that Valerie and her team were able to compile for us. Then we got started with a site visit there in February. About a year ago, we did a tenant survey throughout the process. We had a public review process also from the minimum standards and rules standpoint. And then that brings us to today. So kind of updating where we are at this point. So first with the airport assessment, that's kind of an overarching process where we come in and we look for to provide findings and observations of way to ways to enhance the airport. So we look at every different aspect of the airport from an organizational perspective, from a planning and compliance perspective, the operation of the airport, the infrastructure, product services and facilities. The county does operate the FBO provide services. So we wanted to look at each of those from a environmental and from a market standpoint at the airport and within the community. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to to come down and be here. And then also from a financial standpoint. So that's kind of the overarching process that we we started with from a from an assessment. So part of that was to come down, obviously, get our hands on the airport, look around, talk to people. We had some tenant meetings that we're able to to hold while we're here. We had a public meeting. So we could get feedback and input directly from tenants and users of the airport, obviously, meeting with Valerie and her team, then reviewing all of those documents and compiling our recommendations. So during, after we did that kind of initial site visit, reviewed all of the documents, we put together our recommendations initially. Then, you know, from a very intentional standpoint, we had a tenant survey after that. I wanted us to be able to go through and look at while we had the meetings and we had meetings with tenants and users and and with Valerie. I wanted to review all of the information, make our recommendations, then provide the tenant survey to see if that would confirm or contradict our findings. So we went through that process, some of the key comments that came out of the survey. And the survey was completed by four operators and some over twenty base tenants. But overall satisfaction from an FBO standpoint, the products and services that are available, the desire for more hangars at the airport, that is a common theme across airports on a general aviation basis. There are a lot of airplanes and people want to put those in hangars. Aircraft are getting more and more expensive. They're more expensive to insure. And having them under roof is is a desire, and that has been a challenge from an industry wide perspective, not just at your airport, but some specific strengths. Valerie and her team, from a management perspective, was identified as well as from an infrastructure, that the infrastructure was was safe and serviceable, one of those sponsor assurances. And then fuel pricing. One note on that, you know, just from a this is a tenant survey, so fuel pricing being a strength, most likely would indicate a fair or reasonable or low fuel price. So that's just something to think about from a perspectives basis, because we'll be talking about fuel pricing in a little bit. And then from a weaknesses standpoint, the availability of hangars, we talked about that, concerns on the skydiving side of the airport. Some were noted that the county policies towards the airport and the effective of whether the airport advisory body was effective were some of those weaknesses that were identified. So that brings us to to our recommendations. We looked at, you know, short term, long term recommendations that we believe would really help to move the airport forward. It's important to to recognize the the current initiatives that we're working on from a revenue enhancement. That's the fees and the rents from the rules and regulations, those policy documents, minimum standards. And then we're already working on the advisory body bylaws. But outside of those, kind of, you know, and they're pretty big pieces, but outside of those, these were the recommendations that we provided. And they're all explained and all of the details and the different nuances. But from an agreement standpoint, so kind of start internally from a policy standpoint, get the agreements updated, looking at different accounting protocols between the airport and the FBO, a fuel pricing program. Then from enhancing the services at the at the FBO, so through some of those accounting protocols and the fuel pricing inspection protocols from runway inspection and taxiway, taxi lane inspection. Then expanding the engagement, lease rents and fees policy, which I know Valerie has been working on some of those pieces that that we would typically include within that. And then from an annual hanger rent or hanger inspection protocol. So one note, you know, fuel pricing, we talked about that on the slide previously. That's not necessarily to indicate increase increasing the fuel price, but really to look at it, fuel pricing on a margin basis. So what are we getting for? What are we getting the fuel for at cost? And what's the margin that we need to support the FBO? And support, you know, the next recommendation, those service enhancements. What's that margin that we need from a jet fuel from an avgas standpoint? That's very consistent from an industry overall perspective. And working with FBOs and managing FBOs, that's just very standard of of an approach. So implementing those accounting protocols won't necessarily change anything, but it'll help to develop the appropriate fuel margin basis. Then looking on the long term side, really, this comes down into the planning, looking at the terminal area plan, an ops manual to cover the airport, that master planning concept. Also addressing the North Tea Hangars. That's a unique situation. As someone that's reviewed hundreds and hundreds of agreements, that is a unique situation. I think everyone can probably recognize that. But addressing that, how, what is, what is the plan for that on a long term basis? So we have recommendations related to those to address that. So it's a known commodity of how is this going to be addressed into the future, taking out some of that unknown as it relates to to those specific agreements. Then on environmental basis, information management, security, you know, staffing. Valerie's already been working on the weather procedures. So that's great. And then that air air traffic control tower concept being out there into the future. So that summarizes the assessment of of what we came up with in terms of the recommendations. So as I mentioned, they're all explained in in detail for the more airport nerds of of the group. But then now we flip over to to element two, the rules and regulations. So there were rules and regulations at the airport. We looked at those and felt that they needed to be to be updated. And rules are just that. It's as boring as it sounds. It's safe, orderly, efficient use of the airport. And really, rules apply to everyone that comes on to the airport. Anyone that steps on that property, the rules apply, similar to a park. There's rules for use of a park. The airport is no different. But really, these are driven, you know, back to those sponsor assurances on that that safe and serviceable airport. So these really focus in on that public health and safety aspects. So you know, during the the process of of the rules, when we were down here originally, going through tenant interviews, providing a public review process, getting those comments in, and then addressing each of those. And we'll talk about those a little bit. But just from an overall structure of a
David, just a quick question.
Sure, sorry.
I'm just assuming, but I want want confirmation that the rules and regulations are really driven by the federal and state aviation. F A.
F A. Yep. Yeah, there's compliance elements in there with from an F A perspective. So that's one of the key, you know, that's the starting point. There are some, you know, there's a compliance sandbox that we have to work within. You know, and that's the sponsor assurances. And then all of the advisory circulars that the F A has. There are some then business decisions, you know, on top of that that aren't necessarily spelled out from a compliance standpoint, but it's all related back to that, those compliance pieces. So that's really what's being driven. There's flexibility from a definition standpoint, some of those things, but really, it's all driven from an F A standpoint and compliance. And then from a state county, you know, code, you know, so building codes and fire codes. That's not an F A issue as much as it is a local code. So
Thank you.
So that's how we, you know, approached it from an overall basis. But really, you know, you can see the documents, it's split into different sections, really. So that makes it easier for people that are going to be be impacted by the rules that use the airport. So you know, introduction, general stuff. But then really, if you have an aircraft, you know, you jump into the aircraft section, you know, vehicles, same thing. If you're a tenant, you know, if you're going to be doing fueling, if you're not doing fueling, that's a ten or so pages you can you can skip. And then, you know, I mentioned the definitions. That's an area that we take very seriously. We've done many meetings and processes related to how terms are defined. So we ensure that those terms are very clear. So everyone understands what the the ramifications of certain sentences, certain words, what that means, the difference between, you know, taxiway and taxi lane. We went through months of meetings over that very debate. But the the rules come along with other documents to help the implementation of the document and to change how the airport functions. So from an app from an application and the supplemental information request that anyone that's interested in leasing property at the airport, becoming a tenant at the airport, providing a commercial service at the airport, it's just an application. So Valerie and her team can do the appropriate due diligence on that. If you're doing self, noncommercial self fueling, there's a permit related to that, you know, special events, there's a permit related to that. So really, from a from an overall implication standpoint, you know, if you're coming out to the airport and and using the airport from a from a common industry perspective, the implications are going to be very little. But, you know, defining what air type of aircraft maintenance can occur within, you know, county owned hangars. So that comes back to hot work. That comes back to building code, fire code, types of issues. We also address the noncommercial flying club, current and into the future, consistent from a AOPA Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association recommendation, as well as from an F A standpoint. Then looking at, you know, the noncommercial self fueling, certain compliance requirements, that's really related back to the fueling. You're complying with those as a county. You're providing fuel out there at the airport. And then from a based aircraft registration and nonairworthy aircraft, so that there can be coming back to those hanger inspections, understanding which aircraft are in which hanger. So that's kind of those key, you know, big picture implications that would occur from the rules. Then on the minimum standards, similar from a from an overall policy document, we followed the similar process, you know, from a interviews and we had a public review and we answered questions. We also provided a questionnaire to the commercial operators at the airport so we could understand their business, what they're providing, how they're providing it, you know, hours, people, you know, some of those types of questions, so that we could write the minimum standards appropriate for this airport, consistent with the advisory circular related to minimum standards. A C one fifty fifty-one ninety dash seven. But the the concept of minimum standards is, what is that minimum ante? Or what what are those requirements to be a commercial business at the airport? What do you need to meet? And minimum is the concept. So what are those, you know, minimum requirements? And then free enterprise and, you know, takes over after that. But an easy place to think about is insurance. If you want to provide commercial activities at the airport, there needs to be insurance. And that goes back to the application which comes in from the rules. But understanding where that is. So the questionnaires were very helpful in that process. But minimum standards only relate to those entities providing a commercial service at the airport. Very similar structure from an introduction, you know, those general requirements that everyone needs to comply with. But then broke it down from a section basis into each of the different types of activities. So if you're only providing aircraft maintenance, there's one section that would apply to you. You see commercial skydiving in there. You know, aircraft sales, charter management, whatever different commercial aeronautical activities you're providing from the airport. This gives you the different sections to look at. There is, you know, we developed the commercial operator permit. So if you're going to be providing a commercial service at the airport, this is the permit that you have. Very similar. One provides from a due diligence standpoint, but similar to a business license, just applying it directly at the airport. So from a, you know, implication standpoint, you know, some of the terminology was, we're recommending that to be changed from an L F B O or limited F B O into a S A S O, Specialized Aviation Service Operator. That's just a industry continuity perspective. The requirement for an agreement or a permit, if you're going to provide commercial activities, very consistent from a an overall industry standpoint. And then we also developed the structure for independent operators. So if we go back to the list there at the top, you know, aircraft maintenance is an easy place to think about. Flight training is another. But if you're going to provide aircraft maintenance, there's two different types of operators. One, kind of the brick and mortar concept. Here's my hanger. I'm going to be providing maintenance from this hanger. You know, and you you can come. So don't come to to my hanger and we'll we'll work on that with you fly in, you know, however that works. You know, that's one concept of kind of that traditional aircraft maintenance. Independent maintenance has been around and been in the fabric of general aviation airports since I can remember and talking to people that have been around a lot longer than me. It's been around forever. So people coming on to the airport and providing a service maintenance, you know, in this example, without a place of business. So creating a structure for that, how that's going to work and how that's going to function. We developed those, you know, specifically from a a maintenance and from a flight training perspective. So and that goes back into the commercial operator permit and back to to the insurance requirements that I mentioned earlier. So that kind of covers both documents from a big picture standpoint. But we did get comment responses when we provided those documents out publicly. And that was the design. You know, we want to get those comments in so we can have a chance to to address them and change the documents as needed. You know, and here you can see see the comments. We tried to summarize those, that it feels a little bit big for the airport. You know, and intentionally, you know, they they do get a little bit lengthy. But we developed the documents from a section basis. So only those areas that are going to be, you're going to be impacted. You could reference into those. There is, you know, and it's a fair concern, how is this going to impact people using the airport? As I mentioned before, the rules shouldn't have a major, major impact. Minimum standards are going to impact people coming on to the airport in into the future, if they want to provide a commercial business. We've established a new threshold to come on to the airport consistent from a research basis, you know, looking at other airports like like your airport and what those requirements are. But as well as, you know, through that questionnaire that we provided, what's being provided out there today. We also did, I specifically identified the proprietary exclusive rights. So going back to the sponsor assurances, you can't grant an exclusive right to one entity, but you can hold the proprietary exclusive right because you are the airport sponsor. So we did define that from a commercial fueling standpoint, and then also the noncommercial flying club. There were some questions about that. So we, you know, clarified that structure from a consistent with AOPA F A standpoint. We also did review. I forgot to add it to this list, some comments on the insurance, the minimum insurance requirements. So we did make some changes there to make it consistent from a current activity standpoint. So then the next piece was the airport advisory body bylaws. And really, you know, going through this was really to align with where this started. What the purpose and what the intent of the advisory body is really that's to help, you know, the county help airport management to develop the airport in a high quality manner and be a good neighbor. So we wanted to address some issues that we saw in the advisory body bylaws. And so that it can really get back to that intent of assisting the the board and county officials really to manage the airport. So we did clarify, you know, on the membership criteria, having a general understanding of aviation in general, having an understanding of of the public process and and public meetings. You know, what that frequency of the meetings are going to be, you know, attendance requirements, just trying to make these very clear. And then also giving some discretion to Valerie in that position as airport director that certain things, you know, to be flexible and to be dynamic as a as an airport, you know, plans, policies, special events, agreements, giving that discretion to make some of those decisions, you know, outside of the the advisory bodies. So you know, depending on the the frequency of the meetings and how that would work and how dynamic the situation is, but giving that flexibility from a what will be reviewed standpoint. So that's kind of one of the the key pieces there as it relates to the advisory body bylaws. But that takes us through the first three. I know that's a lot of information for for to get through. But But, you know, then the, the next two, and this is really revenue, this is always a bit of an area that is of interest. Um, you know, from a rent study and from a fee study standpoint. So just first big picture, um, yeah, and Mallory had some of those. I might just grab a drink here real quick. You know, first big picture, um, the FAA provides a lot of latitude, um, to airport sponsors, especially from a general aviation, uh, perspective of how to set rents. There are certain requirements in there, obviously. Uh, we go back to the sponsor assurances to maintain a fee and rental structure to make the airport as self-sustaining as possible. That's the language in there, but, you know, there are certain pieces from a rent, uh, determination basis. One is very, the cost valuation is very much related to air carrier. Uh, and kind of the signatory, non-signatory concept, uh, as it relates to, to funding. But we, we went through this process from a rent and from a fee standpoint, consistent with FAA guidance, also consistent with ACRP Guide Book two thirteen, it is, um, you know, to be honest and forthright, we wrote that, um, but it is the Airport Cooperative Research Program. It's funded. If you're not familiar with that, it's funded through the Transportation Research Board on a national basis. Um, or it's run through the Transportation Research Board, funded by the FAA and its applied research. So we were, or the lead firm on, on that process. There are two FAA liaisons that sit on each of those panels to accept those documents. So, we know the overall methodology is consistent from an FAA perspective, but, but really what we, you know, when we're looking at rent, what we're trying to do is one, get a handle on, on this airport, you know, what are, what are the improvements, what are the components of those improvements? What's the condition? What are the detail sizes? All, all of those types of questions, types of lights, is it insulated? You know, what's the condition amenities, all of those questions? We walked all of the hangars with Valerie when we were here, so we could get an understanding of this airport. You know, and then from that standpoint, we have that piece of information. Now we want to understand the airport from an operational infrastructure perspective. So we developed that profile and then that's when we go out and look in the market. You know, there's nineteen thousand five hundred or so landing fields in the United States, thirty-six hundred or so, um, are within the National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems from an FAA standpoint, so receiving FAA funding. But we want to find what airports are most similar to yours. So we're looking at the different aspects of, of the airport. So that's why we go out and we identify comparable and competitive airports. One comparable is that infrastructure and activity. Competitive is the local area, uh, and then you also have a national guard. So we wanted to look at airports, uh, similar to that. And then we go out and we research what's going on at those airports, understanding what the rent basis is at those airports. Very similar to if you're appraising a house, uh, you look in your neighborhood. We need to create the neighborhood. The neighborhood for aeronautical uses, uh, consistent with the FAA is other aeronautical uses. So we need to go find other airports with similar uses that are similar to this airport. So, you know, and then we come back, obviously, uh, analyze all of that data and then provide our, our opinion of, of rent. But, you know, just to break down each of those categories from a comparable airport standpoint, you know, only airports within the MPIIS were included, only general aviation airports within there. Uh, airports without a control tower that have a precision approach, you know, we looked at runway length, we looked at the acreage, and then kind of just bracketed, you know, really the, the activity, uh, that's going on at your airport, you know, on the itinerary ops, total operations, you know, based aircraft. So we want to go out and find other airports from an infrastructure and from an activity basis that are similar to yours. So that's kind of.
Hey, what's that PU, um, slash month? What does that stand for?
Oh, per unit, per month.
Per unit, okay.
So that, you know, the first one is kind of that. Did you have another question? Sorry. No, okay. So at first, you know, comparable airports, that's the first bucket. And then we look at competitive airports. So, you know, that, you know, pretty self-explanatory, within forty nautical miles or an hour drive time, uh, of the airport, so that we can understand this local market. Then the National Guard, uh, we wanted to look at airports that have that in service, uh, the, the National Guard. So we looked at airports like that. So really, we can pick out all the main pieces, activity and infrastructure, that's the first category. The local area, uh, and then the guard base, uh, pick out each of those pieces. So when we make our recommendations, we can, uh, trust and, and understand that they are, uh, appropriate for this airport. As you'll see here, this is kind of a high-level, uh, review. I know Valerie handed out the more detailed, uh, information, but we are recommending some changes. Um, and, and that is a product of that research. Uh, so we go out and we research all of those airports, look at all of that. It's all defined and, and discussed within the, the rent study document. But we are recommending some changes, uh, here from a, from an overall rent standpoint. So, you know, some of them are, are significant changes and we'll talk about those as we get down into, uh, the recommendations here, uh, more towards the end. But that's kind of the overall rent study, and then we'll jump over to the fee study quick. So if we, if we look at, you know, if you just think about it from a big picture standpoint, if it's a million-dollar operating budget for the airport, the rents you set on market, so say we have six hundred thousand there, then we have four hundred thousand to cover to make it as self-sustaining as possible. Uh, so that is developed through fees, and that's why we related to cost recovery. Uh, so the, the rents are market, the fees are cost recovery. So, while it's not a financial audit, we went through the, the budget to understand all of the different costs. We identified the, the existing elements of the fee program at the airport. Looked at industry practices, uh, we did go out from those same airports that we just talked about from a, um, from a rent basis, we did get information from those airports too. One, on what types of fees they're charging, and two, what that fee amount is. Uh, you know, cost recovery is, is nice, but it has to be within the bounds of the market too. We don't want to have a negative impact, uh, to demand and to use, uh, at the airport. And then we provided those, uh, recommendations. So this is just an overview of those kind of common fees that are, that exist at general aviation airports. Then the current situation of the three fees that are being charged from a fuel flowage, uh, the transient aircraft handling fee, uh, and the parking fee, how common they are, uh, and then our recommendations. So I think one takeaway here is we did recommend expanding the fee program by one fee, uh, the aeronautical permit fee, and we'll talk about those, each of these four, uh, specifically, but one from a fuel flowage fee, that is by far the most common, uh, fee for, um, general aviation airports and service, or fuel service providers, uh, at airports. Your current program only charges that to non-commercial, non-commercial self-fueling because you are, uh, the, the FBO, the commercial provider of fuel. We recommend going back to the assessment on those accounting protocols and the fuel pricing program, uh, that the, that fuel flowage fee would apply to all the gallons that are sold at the airports. That would be part of that margin analysis, uh, within the fuel pricing program for, uh, gallons that are sold from a county basis. So, that wouldn't necessarily change anything. It would just be from an accounting basis to really understand whether that fuel margin, uh, needs to be. We recommend expanding the transient aircraft handling fee. Currently it's turbine only, uh, and we, as people that fly a piston aircraft, we think it's important for everyone using the airport to participate in the financial health of that airport. So having, uh, that transient aircraft handling fee, uh, on the ramp there at the FBO, uh, that that would apply. So that would, uh, cover all of the difference, um, all of the, the different aircraft that, that visit the airport. Then from a parking, uh, fee basis, uh, really breaking this down, uh, a little bit more into, you know, a day fee, so that, you know, during the day, overnight, and then monthly. Uh, so that would be your monthly tie-downs, which sometimes people think of that from a rent basis, but we have that, you know, kind of within the fees on that monthly, and if you're going to be there overnight or they're going to be there, uh, for the day, what those fees should be, um, based on that cost recovery, but also that litmus test of what the market, uh, should be able to bear. And then also on the aeronautical permit fee, that if you're going to be chart, providing commercial, uh, activities at the airport, that kind of business license, license concept, uh, that goes along with the commercial operator, uh, permit that we talked about a little bit earlier. And this kind of brings us, you know, to the, to the fee, uh, table. And as I was flying down this morning, I didn't notice one change. So we'll change the type of aircraft, uh, there under type of fee, um, the, on the bottom three, the turboprop jet helicopter. That's, they're the wrong terms, and I apologize for that. Um, but really, you know, the, the key focus here is, is more to the left. So if we keep the existing rent, uh, basis that is out there at the airport today, and we implement new fees, we'll recover thirty percent of that gap. Um, so we're still, you know, and, and the county general fund contribution is at five fifty, uh, number. So we'll recover thirty percent of that. New rents, which, um, you know, obviously that would warrant a, a, a big change, uh, would recover, you know, a significant portion of, of the gap that is going on, uh, at the airports, that the, we can move the airport, you know, to be as financially self-sustaining as possible. Obviously, that would warrant changes, uh, at the airport from a rent structure, uh, and from a fee structure, uh, so that the airport could financially stand on its own more. Um, you know, and that's a, a key piece to, to operate in the airport. The county would still participate from a major capital outlay, uh, standpoint, but that operational budget, um, you know, really being, being covered, uh, from, from an internal, you know, users of the airport. So that's why looking at, you know, just big picture, how we have this contribution that's occurring, and how are we going to address that? And everyone's going to participate in that. So that's where the transient aircraft users come in, based aircraft, uh, tenants, uh, from a rent standpoint, from a fee standpoint, all of those different pieces, but keeping it all within the bounds of the market. We've researched all of those airports. We understand what's being charged at those airports, what the rent basis is at those airports. We've inspected all of the properties at the airport. So we think all of those are, are reasonable from a, from an overall implementation standpoint, but.
Our folks out there, uh, how many years is it going to take?
There are some, right, so there are some, um, long-term leases that you won't be able to adjust right away. Uh, but on a lot of the kind of box hangars, executive hangars, T-hangers, they're on a, a month-to-month annual basis. So that would allow, uh, changes to occur. But those long-term leases, you know, if the, if the rent is defined, um, and there's a term, there's nothing, you can't do anything as it relates to those. Um, but that's a common issue at, at airports. There's some long-term leases and it kind of is what it is. And you adjust where you can. And then when that comes up for renewal, or there's an amendment or an extension, that's when the rent basis is then changed for that.
David, okay, on the sheet, transient aircraft handling fee, um, please help me understand why turboprop is at two hundred and a jet is at thirty-five. Is it simply the square?
No, that's, that's the, uh, so we can go back there. That's the, the language, uh, needs to change. So it should say single-engine piston, multi-engine piston, then jet, helicopter, and other. So the turboprop and jet and helicopter are the wrong three words there. That should say jet at the three hundred, uh, helicopter at the one fifty, and then other at the one fifty. I noticed that this morning on the way down, I apologize. So now just to, you know, from our standpoint, what our recommendation, uh, would be, you know, from a rules and regulations standpoint, from a minimum standards, uh, perspective, the airport advisory body bylaws, that's an internal policy document. It's been reviewed by Valerie and her team. It's been reviewed by tenants and users out at the airport. We responded to all of those comments. Uh, and we think moving forward with, with those three, three documents, and then the, kind of those supporting ancillary, kind of more internal management documents, uh, that would be appropriate. Uh, then on a fees basis, you know, obviously getting those, that nomenclature fixed, uh, but implementing those. But really it comes down to the rent, um, you know, and this is, this is a, you know, we, we have an airplane, it's based at Centennial. We don't like paying more rent either, you know, it is what it is. Um, but, uh, you know, having an, uh, moving for, moving the airport forward to be consistent from a self-sustainability, uh, perspective for the airport. Uh, some airports elect to, or some airport sponsors elect to have an implementation period. Um, you know, in, when we get involved, uh, in situations where, where the FAA has a bright light on, on things from a part thirteen, part sixteen basis. You know, that two-year timeframe, you know, is, is a, a period of time that the FAA looks at from an appropriate for implementation. You know, three years, you know, might be another option, but having that implementation time, I can understand that from both sides of the coin. Uh, one from a county perspective, uh, one from a tenant's standpoint. So, so that's, yeah, an area, um, that would be an option. But really, you know, that, those new rents and fees are going to support, you know, being able to look at implementing some of those assessment pieces, going all the way back to our first piece. Money, you know, it does require, uh, money to, to move the airport forward, obviously. Some are internal operational pieces. Um, but you know, making those matches, uh, on some of those items that are addressed in there. Um, the financial health of the airport is, is really an important piece. So that brings us to the end, uh, each of the different elements that we, we talked through. And then from a, a recommendation standpoint, happy to answer questions if there are more, um, you know, whether that's today or into the future. Um, we're not going anywhere. I've been with the company now seventeen years, I think. So, um, you know, if questions come up, whether, you know, uh, from this perspective or from Valerie, we're happy to answer any questions as it relates to, to our work and to our research. But appreciate the opportunity, uh, to be here today and to, to do this work. We enjoy this. Not everyone does, but we really do. Um, and we appreciate the opportunity.
Can you go back one page, please?
Sure.
So in our, our packet, approve or adopt the proposed rules and regulations, minimum standards, advisory board bylaws and associated forms. Are, are we being asked to do all that tonight?
That is a request. Full review period. It was a public comment period of over a month, people to make, sorry. Yes, the request is for the rules and regs, minimum standards and bylaws to be adopted for implementation tonight. All of these documents went through a full public review multiple times where people had a chance to come. They were printed out and put it, um, in the FBO for anyone to come and look at that they wanted to. Uh, most of the documents have, and it's in your packet, the comment and response. So any comment received was itemized anonymously and responded to as appropriate. Um, some of the general comments, there's no response, like I don't want rules. But those three documents, um, nothing in them to me had a lot of pushback. The minor thing that we did have an issue on minimum standards, we worked through, and that was insurance.
You would like them approved, but is there a reason they have to be approved tonight?
That, there's no reason they would have to be tonight. It's just after sixteen months of working on it, I, I'm proud of it and I, I, it was hoping to have it implemented. Um, the, the rates and fees and the new leases ideally would be sometime before July first and ideally before June first, so that we can go ahead and implement those rents and let the people know in advance, rather than push it out July one without giving them sixty days' notice.
Uh, this is a lot of information in this.
Yeah.
Catchments that we all need to look from enough to be able to vote on it tonight.
So David, I, I have a few questions. Um, so, wh- what do you, what would you describe as the major changes regarding the airport board?
Airport board?
Yeah, the function of the airport board.
Uh, functionally, you know, there's, there's more, um, and I could get the, the document, um, specifically, but that, let me think through this from a big picture standpoint, that the, getting back to the intent of, of why the advisory body was created, uh, and why, you know, at airports that we work with, some of the people that work for us sit on advisory bodies. Um, but what, what is the purpose? And that's to, to help, you know, the commissioners, but also Valerie, you know, in, in that position to manage the airport, you know, to the benefit of, of the community, not only your local community, but also from a, um, from an aviation perspective. So, but airports are also dynamic. So, you know, having, I work for a private company, so we're a little bit more flexible than the public side. Um, you know, if we want to make a decision, we make it, we, we move on and, and deal with it. But on the public side, there, there are some of those requirements, you know, from, from a meeting standpoint, but if, if there is something that comes up allowing the flexibility, um, you know, and the trust to that position of this, you know, if there's a, a, an issue that needs to be addressed and a major decision needs to be made, you know, there isn't a requirement to go through the advisory body, that that can come straight to here. Um, and, but also that the advisory body can function to, to support the airport, having that understanding from an aviation perspective. Uh, but also, you know, adjusting the, the, the amount of meetings, but may ensuring that there's participation in those meetings. So. So I think that's kind of the, the big picture, um, you know, and then. I, I, yeah, I, I would say that's, that's the big, the overarching, you know, big picture of, of where the major changes are.
I, I think we all, I mean, I'll, I'll. Think I speak for everybody, we really value the airport advisory board. We want to make sure it's doing what it ought to do and um, and we value its input. Um, and we want to make sure to work with them in a constructive way. But I, um, and I don't mind asking this question and I don't mind you asking it in public and in front of the. News or whatever, but there was one thing you said was a weakness back in the beginning of your speech or your presentation. And one of the, one of the weaknesses. Um, county policies. So. And, and this isn't anything to argue about. I'm not here to say, well, look what the county is, um, how they've been supportive of the airport. I, I was glad to hear that you had twenty-two tenants uh stepped forward and became part of this and that's, I mean, that's great. Uh, that's a good number. Um, so I'd, I'd like to know if you, if you could share. Um, what you felt like those uh county policies or was it county attitude? Was it, um, and feel free to share openly on that, we'd like.
Be open, yeah. So one, the, um, all of the comments anonymously are in the. Airport tenant survey results, so they're all in there. Um, but just reading from, from some of those, you know, we're trying to summarize, you know, I don't know how many, I didn't count them up necessarily. Uh, the number of comments, but um, you know, that, you know, sometimes it feels like there's wasted steps in the process and the commissioners are going to do what they want to do regardless. Comments like that, um, and that's not from us, you know, we were new to, to the party, um, if you will, which is helpful that, you know, we can have an unbiased. Um, you know, opinion and, and we understand that there's frustrations at, at airports, um, you know, and. And frustrations everywhere, I guess, air, airports aren't unique in that standpoint. But that's, I, I think that's a, a good summary, um, you know, of, of what the perspective, you know, from.
Were those, I, I read a bunch of questions, answers and the consent items. Is that where those are? Where are the, where, I mean, I'm, I'm interested in reading those.
These should be part of airport tenant survey results, which is an attachment to this presentation.
Okay.
Chairman, let me uh maybe shine some light on this subject. I was in that meeting, uh, as you know, I go to almost all of them. And the big consensus with the people that were complaining was the fact that we were trying to tie down the use on the hangers. That, you know, we have certain guidelines since we take FAA money, that it's supposed to be aviation oriented. And, and be honest with you, a lot of the hangers out there had turned into be storage facilities. And their attitude was, once I lease this hangar, I ought to be able to do whatever I want to. And of course, that's not the way it works. So anytime you tell people, this is not going to be the way it's going to be moving forward, you're going to have some people that aren't happy about it. But that, I think that's the general consensus of what we ran into and, and I really don't think it's that big a deal. And you've been on the airport advisory board, I've been on it for a long time and. Our idea there is to let these people that operate in that neighborhood down there, because it is a neighborhood. Uh, to tell us what they need and, and to tell us what they would like to see the commissioners do. And, you know, we, I think when you were on it, tea hangers is all they talked about. Well, that's all they're talking about now. And we've looked at that, this is just not cost-effective right now. We're doing the right thing, building the larger hangers, which bring in more tax revenue for the larger aircraft. But you've got people that's been on site down there ever since I've been on that board and they just don't like change. So anytime you start implementing change and cleaning up things so that we stay in compliance with the FAA, you're going to have some people that's not going to be happy. But I think in general, I think the advisory board does a good job keeping us informed about what they need and the problems that arise. Sometimes you hear about the skydiving school and that kind of stuff, but. All in general, they do a great job and, and I, and I really appreciate these guys volunteering their time to inform us of what's going on at the airport. Cause we're not out there every day and they are, a lot of them make their livings out there. So, um, a few negative comments, that's to be expected. But the day I was in that meeting, most people were complimentary of what we were doing and they liked the idea that all the commissioners are supporting the airport continuously, not just in and out, in and outs. They know that they can count on us to take care of what they need. So, so that's what I saw.
I, um, I get my agenda printed out every two weeks, cause I go through and make a lot of markups and notes and highlights. And, you know, when. Just because I got, I kind of got to lead the discussion, right? And, um, no fault of anyone's, all I had was your presentation. So I, I'll go back and uh read those. I, I didn't know where those were, because I didn't get them. So that's my fault and I'll, I'll go back and reread those, so.
One other item with this project being sixteen months long, some of the tenant survey comments have already been addressed. Because we have different advisory board members at this time. So being that it's over a year-long project, some of the original comments and some of the, like, if you look at the hangar fees. At one time, we didn't have a tenant in one of those hangers. So some of these documents reflect it because we couldn't consistently start over in each document. So once we got done with one, um, so I feel some of those comments are made based when we didn't have attendance. When we didn't have our um advisory board members coming to meetings.
All right, I have one more question, it should be a quick one. Um, so I heard you say two years, we were talking about rates. And I think what you were saying is if we were to get. Uh, if, if uh the powers that be kind of sniffed us out and said, hey, you're kind of behind here on fees. As long as we had a plan to get there, they would, I, I think that's what you're pointing out, that they may be satisfied.
Yeah, the, the requirement from an FAA standpoint would be that you manage the airport in a self-sustaining manner. As self, as self-sustaining as possible, given the circumstances that exist. Then there is, is latitude uh from an FAA perspective. Um, you know, and we can get into all the nuances over uh many hours um of that. But the, when the, the two years i- is really related to when it has become a formal complaint. That's when that process starts. So as long as you're, the FAA wants to see the, the airport sponsor moving the airport forward. Um, you know, and that, that two-year timeframe is kind of a, a, a period of time that is agreed upon, that is effective to move the airport forward. Maybe three years, depending on the, the delta um between of what's going on. But, but yeah, it's, it's moving the airport forward, um, not over twenty years, but over two to three.
Yeah, we've got improvements need to be make, uh, made as little as five percent and that's only one. We've, I don't know how many hangers we have here, you would know off the top of your head, but only one is at five percent. And the rest jump up sixty-nine, ninety-seven, a hundred and forty-three, two-hundred-and-fifty-four percent. Um, increase, so I don't, I don't think anyone here wants to pile that on. Maybe all at once, I, I don't know. That's something I think we really need to talk about and so possibly if we did that, I'm just only speaking for myself now. If we knew kind of how many years we would have to do that, then we could um be more comfortable.
And one of my personal concerns is if we do try to go to large amounts of funding, for example, to get a parallel taxiway. And our rates and fees are looked at and the FAA would say, you're not working to be as sustainable as you can, why should we?
With, with what you already have.
Correct, so if you're giving five forty, but we could only be giving four, forty, it's a big difference. And then that also supports, if we did want to do a project with some more ground lease, um, tea hangers, not ground lease, just tea hangers. Um, that five hundred thousand over five years, you could have that and then do more capital projects to help the airport grow.
So we've gone for an hour and uh not to minimize, it's certainly important. I, I really appreciate mostly, well, all of it, but I appreciate the fee study because in the past, as Craig would tell you. Our, our airport director would just spend an afternoon on the phone and call, uh, Eric, well, you know, that's what happens, right? They just call airports in the area and then they'd say, oh, we're pretty good, we're pretty competitive. And uh, so this is really instructive and very helpful. Um, I mean, unless someone has uh something else, I mean, Kim, uh, would you, would you like to? Be able to study this for the next two weeks and bring it back?
Less than an hour.
Yeah, yeah.
And uh, next time you print it, print it on something bigger than that, I can't read that. Yep, I, I think we ought to table it to the next meeting.
Yeah, can we do that? You make the motion.
Table, uh, the voting of this uh upgrade at the airport until the.
Mike, you want a second?
Next meeting.
Okay, and um, and Valerie, we are fully aware that you're under a time schedule because you have July. Uh, lease, leases coming up.
Annual ones.
So we, we will, we will be ready for you in two weeks and that should be enough time, right?
Absolutely.
Is that okay? All right, well, thank, thank you all, uh, and safe travels back and we appreciate your input on our airport.
They will be available in the morning tomorrow, so if questions come up overnight or if somebody does want to meet tomorrow, we may be able to do something early before they fly back out.
Well, thank you, appreciate it, thank you. Shane. You have three minutes. We can do it.
Good afternoon. So this request before us this afternoon marks the first application for the SNIA process that went from administrative, which the board received uh applications for. And now this is actually a conditional district uh zone change. So Mr. Doug Foley is the applicant, he's present in case the board members have any questions of him, but we'll just jump right into it. The subject property is located in Horsepower Park, Western Rowan. You see all the purple and red, that's uh industrial and commercial zoned areas with multiple parks, Moore'sville Drag Strip and probably eighty percent of the SNI request that we get. So anything that you see colored here in the blue, tan and green and there's red areas, those are watersheds. That were uh mandated by the state ninety-four. So every one of these watersheds has a WSO watershed overlay that is associated with um. Any property within those watersheds. So this request here would be a conditional district in that watershed. For example, you see the star here in, in yellow. The subject site is in the Cottle Creek watershed, which that limits development to twelve percent. And this process, if approved, allows up to seventy with that conditional district. Much like all of our previous requests, we give the rundown of our current acreage in the watershed. And the uh ten percent, that's what we can as a county remove. There's currently been ninety parcels removed, a hundred and sixty-two acres. So we still have right now, before this one's considered, a thousand and thirty-two acres in the Cottle Creek watershed. We look at the site, we're at the end of Nitro Alley and Horsepower Park. The property was zoned back in two thousand eighteen by the commissioners. And later, Mr. Foley developed this in, in twenty-one to a small industrial park. Transforming to the map here, kind of give you an idea. This is a subject request, location lot four in twenty-one. And then last year on these two lots, we received a request in the old process, administrative by the board. This will be our first conditional district request, there's four lots left that can be considered. Here's a site plan, it's a twelve thousand square foot building, three tenant spaces, uh, potential. It's a little over an acre lot, so right now it's undeveloped, so zero square foot, proposing twelve. The additional twelve, nine eleven would be for the asphalt paving. And that gets you to fifty-two percent. So it's a, a healthy use of that percentage over twelve, just right under seventy. And there's the previous breakdown too of what we've had before. So still have one point three six devoted out of our ten percent total in that total acreage. And within the change, we also have land use plan guidance. On the top one, I think that's a bit of a, it, it's one piece of the, the puzzle. Generally, you don't want more than two acres removed, doesn't mean always going to be the case, but for this one, we're well under that. So there's an increase in the tax base and some jobs created. It is proportionate, we're only asking for an acre, it's not asking for fifty acres with two or three jobs in a five thousand square foot building. That's what bullet point number two addresses. The third one, not aware of any capital improvement plans, but that's something that we usually look at for anything that's been a pre-identified that we're aware of. That need to be considered in that percentage. Fourth bullet point, uh, there's from a non-residential zoned area comparison, we're well under that. There's not, there's not more zoned, non-residential than we have the, in our allocation allotment. It complied with the previous land use plan recommendations when zone industrial. And the last one, which is the most uh poignant on this one, we're directly within those existing parks, zoned uh industrial. From a notice standpoint, only three neighbors received letters, those representing uh property owners within a hundred feet. And posted a sign on the property, received no phone calls. Planning board recommended approval unanimously offered for uh bullet points in our statement of reasonableness and consistency for your consideration. So again, with this, we'll have a public hearing and um go from there. Any questions?
You go back to your math page, a few back, um, I was trying to read through that, I think you said maybe a. Pages before that, we had a thousand ninety-four acres left, some, something along that line, thousand thirty-two. Um, how much does this take out?
One point zero nine.
Okay. All right, any questions for Shane? All right, then uh we will, um, a- anything from the applicant at all? No, thank you for being here and thank you for investing, appreciate it. All right, we'll uh open the floor to a public hearing, any, anyone want to speak on this? Or if not, we'll close the public hearing and let's see, I'll make a motion for a statement of consistency and reasonableness. SNIA oh one two three is reasonable, appropriate and necessary to meet the development needs of Rowan County, not previously envisioned by the West Rand. Land use plan with a watershed overlay based on the following. One, it allows for parcel to be used consistently with other surrounding parcels. Two, it increases a tax base and job creation. Three, it is below the maximum allowable threshold. Four, it is located within a commercial industrial park, which is strongly recommended in the watershed overlay. Make that an informal motion, we have a second, second, all in favor say aye, aye. We have a motion to approve SNIA oh one dash two three. All right, in a second, all in favor say aye, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Foley, uh, thank you Shane. Hey. Welcome.
Good afternoon, um, this is the public hearing for the agritourism-related text amendments to the zoning ordinance. We had presented you some uh background information at the previous meeting. Um, so I won't go into a lot of the detail about how we got from agritourism and agriculture to this text. But I think um, in light of some things that have happened over the last couple of years, I think the board um is, is somewhat well-versed in. Um, how agriculture and zoning have this um sort of confrontational relationship in a lot of ways. But so what we've got here is a request that came from the Tourism and Development Authority to the county to look at our zoning ordinance and see if it would be possible to allow. Alcohol sales and consumption at agritourism sites. And while we focused on that, we, we took the opportunity as staff to look at some other recreation and service-based uses. And tried to include them within the mix. So um, we've got a request that, that again focuses on alcohol at some agritourism sites, but also we broadened it to, to allow some other uses and we'll talk about those real briefly. So again, this is ZTA oh one. So again, this is ZTA oh one dash twenty-three, the public hearing, we've advertised for it and, um, we'll get into the text. So the agriculture overlay is an existing district. What would happen if, if someone wanted to be located in this district? It's a legislative rezoning process. They go through the planning board. Planning board makes a recommendation, it comes to this board for another hearing and then, uh, eventual adoption or action taken on it. Shane mentioned the watershed overlay. That's what this is to, it's an overlay district. It overlays over the, um, an existing district. We modified the purpose and intent, um, that was in the text to, uh, capture how the AO will be utilized. And I want to read this to you, um, and make a couple of key points. The purpose of the AO is to enhance the underlying RA district with options that encourage the continued vitality of active farming operations and preservation of viable agricultural areas. So number one, it's got to be an RA zone property. Can't be CBI, can't be rural residential, can't be industrial. So the, the underlying property is going to be rural agriculture. The district may be applied to all or portions of property consisting of working farmland used extensively for agricultural and livestock production. So the whole farm doesn't have to be or have the AO district applied to it, only where, um, the farm operator wants these retail or service-based, um, opportunities to occur on their farm. But it could be the entire farm. So it's a portion of the farm. But the other important thing I would, I would impress upon the board is that it's working farmland. This is not intended to be those other properties that just qualify because they generate a thousand dollars a year and can qualify as, uh, present use value. These are, these are working farms. It's kind of that, situation. You know it when you see it. And, and I think that, that we would all agree that we know, or when we drive by those farms, we, we know that they're a working farm. The district is intended to supplement bona fide farming and agritourism activities defined in the statute with ancillary retail trade and services to support the overall farm operation. Again, another key point is to supplement the bona fide farming and agritourism activities. We're going to look at that statute real quickly in a second. But then we say that retail trade and services identified are generally recognized as non-farm uses, but are reasonably related to tourism interests when occurring in conjunction with an existing farming operation. And this is where that, that conflict tends to exist between zoning and agriculture. If you remember from, uh, our previous meeting, non-farm uses can be regulated on a farm. But generally agriculture uses cannot be regulated by zoning. So that's where we are today. We're trying to bridge that gap so that some of these farmers in our community can diversify and do some additional, uh, commercial and retail, um, operations. So we've got some standards that we're going to look at, but we go on to say that the standards from this chapter are utilized to protect neighbors and the general public's health and safety from the broad impacts when introducing these uses in a rural setting. Okay. So I talked about, um, supplementing bona fide farm purposes. Here from the statute underline, bona fide farm purposes include the production and activities relating to or incidental to the production of crops, grains, fruits, vegetables, ornamental and flowering plants, dairy, livestock, poultry and all other forms of agriculture. That's per the statute. Also supplements agritourism, and that's any activity carried out on a farm or ranch that allows members of the general public for recreational, entertainment or educational purposes to view or enjoy rural activities, including farming, ranching, historic, cultural, harvest your own activities, hunting, fishing, equestrian activities or natural activities and attractions. Um, a building or structure used for agritourism includes any building or structure used for public or private events, including but not limited to weddings, receptions and so on. So here's the way the, the use table or the, the uses are set up in the zoning ordinance. Um, we've got the uses that are allowed. And then we've got those that are ancillary uses that are permitted. And then we've got those with special requirements and, um, the, the red text, uh, that with the strike through is text that's recommended be eliminated. One and two, under the standard industrial classification is our crops and livestock. They're already exempt per the statute, so there's no need to take up space in the ordinance. Agricultural services are allowed. We remove the slaughtering and, and boarding kennel and the like. Those are already allowed, but, but oh seven includes things like crop services, veterinarians, uh, landscape and horticultural services, farm supplies, um, in fifty-one, ninety-one are going to be things like agricultural chemical sales, fertilizers and things of that nature. So when we get into the ancillary uses, these are going to be things that are going, that can be permitted by the planning staff, um, when the, the applicant comes to the office. However, if they're in this AO district, there's a strong possibility that they're going to also be subject to the building code and the environmental health standards. Um, last meeting, we talked about how most buildings in, uh, agriculture use are exempt from the building code, but they are not exempt from all the other trades. They've still got to get the plumbing, mechanical and electrical and the, so the things that would be allowed under this would be, um, under the building and materials, that's going to be things like lumber and building materials. Fifty-three, uh, general merchandise store is apparel, dry goods, home furnishings. Fifty-six would, would be clothing and the rest of these, as we go through here, are pretty self-explanatory.
Amusement rides?
Amusement ride. Yeah, rides. So those would be things like a, uh, the board text that we've seen, it's got to get permitted, that needs a, um, inspection from the, the state or the ride aspect of it, but that would be an allowed use. Indoor archery range or shooting range would also be allowed. Boats, canoe rentals, day camps, those kind of things. But those would be in the AO. So if they have the AO designation, those things could be permitted by staff and move through the, either building inspection phase and then on to the state if, if they have to have permit through, the agency whose name escapes me, but, but also could be the ALE office as well. Okay. You have another question?
Surprised to see that one.
So, um, here's the special requirements, and these are the ones that, um, are going to be permitted subject to the special use requirements that are in the ordinance now. Again, if they're in the AO district and an applicant wants to get a permit for a drinking place, the standard that we reference them to is they're have to, want to have to have a thousand-foot separation from any church, school, daycare or park. That's the only requirement they've got to have. With the addition of the hours of operation, uh, down below and D, the operation may open from ten AM until nine PM. So cabins and campgrounds, um, the current standards that are in the ordinances, there's a two-acre minimum, uh, size, lot size. There are setbacks, there's road standards, parking requirements, screening and buffering, sewage disposal requirements, trash removal, and there's an addressing component for the street. Those are currently in there. If it's a gun club or shooting club, there's shot containment, noise mitigation, setbacks, warning signs, operation hours, lighting, there's an insurance component as well. Um, we know from our last meeting as well that there's a general statute that prevents weapons in establishments where alcohol is sold and consumed. So, um, there may be a conflict between fifty-eight thirteen and, and, um, a gun club or shooting club, but we're going to rely on the operator or owner of that facility to police that themselves in, in concert with, uh, the ALE folks.
You can have both, is what you're saying.
You can't have both. Yeah, yeah. There's nothing that we sort of briefly talked about it, but these are not mutually exclusive. They could be on the same property.
So Ed, under amusement rides, does that mean that someone can set up the whole amusement rides that we see out at the county fair on their farm?
True.
Everyone's looking at each other.
Unless you want to remove it, um, in the public hearing.
You know, I, if you've been out to Patterson, they've got this little, little train, I mean, little. And that's what I think of for a farm amusement, but to think that we're going to approve a like a mini.
County fair.
Yeah, county fair. Yeah.
Yeah, but Ed, did, didn't that ordinance say that it had to be a working farm? So you can't just have a field out there if you're not farming or raising livestock or something and, and be able to get this permit or this overlay, excuse me.
So the, and, and both of these are very good points. Um, but what I would tend to say is that when that rezoning application comes in, staff's going to evaluate it. We're going to talk to, uh, cooperative extension and the other folks that, have a better knowledge of the, the situation and, um, prepare that report and send it through the planning board and, and you know, you guys will see it too. I mean, you're going to make a, an informed decision as to whether or not you feel comfortable allowing a facility to have these opportunities to do other things. But again, this is proposed text. If you want to remove one or all of them, uh, feel free to do so.
So what, what you see is, i- is the efforts to try to distinguish between uh, sort of the bona fide farm use and agritourism and those uses that we think fall outside of that, that would need this layer. Um, it's an effort to begin to distinguish those uses. Because you see in these uses, we would look at separation standards and off-site parking and all the other things that right now we currently cannot do in the general argument with, hey, I'm a bona fide farm and this is agritourism. And so I'm going to put up, you know, X number of, of rides and I'm going to have X, you know, X hundreds of people here for, you know, twenty straight weekends. And, you know, we just don't have anything to govern the noise and the parking and the impacts on the neighbors. And so what you, what you're seeing is an effort to distinguish between those uses that need separation standards and those that would more naturally be bona fide farm agritourism uses.
Okay, thanks, Jay.
A hard line to draw, but we're trying.
Well, well, and it creates some coverage for us in, in the event that we do have to, um, have some enforcement mechanism, we, we can truthfully tell someone that we've got a process that, that you can try to show us how you can comply. I, I think across the state, everyone's dealing with this issue in a different way. A lot of them just don't do anything and we've, we've got a lot of farms. A lot of present use of key properties as well. And so this is an attempt to try to distinguish between those two and help those that are, are doing what they can to maintain their farms compared to those that are trying to lessen their tax burden from, from, uh, from that standpoint. So and, and you guys understand that. I don't want to get into the, the nuances of it, but the other items we have are horse shows. Um, there's, there's standards there for nuisance odors, setbacks, there's parking. I call it noise mitigation, but it's, it's that, um, amplified sound. And then we've got zoological parks. There's a twenty-acre minimum standard. It's got the same odor setbacks and there's some security restrictions, which really means fencing. We talked about this previously and I mentioned it also, the hours of operation for the, uh, drinking places is ten AM until nine PM. And, um, if there is a change in the bona fide farm status, we would say that the expansion, repair and replacement of any of those that were permitted under the ancillary or the special requirement, uh, will be subject to non-conforming situations, section of the zoning ordinance. I didn't mean to be flippant earlier when I said you can approve any or, or none of them. But certainly, you know, you, you've got a, a variety of things you can do. You can adopt this as it is. You can table it, send it back to the planning board. Um, you can remove a single item or a couple of them, whatever you, um, whatever you feel led to do. And if you do have that concern, I would, I would say that, um, you know, the text is not set in stone. We, we do text amendments all the time and if things warrant, we could come back and we could add, um, amusement rides at a later time, if you feel more comfortable doing that. But well. So the planning board gives us a statement of consistency. It's consistent with the West Rowan Land Use Plan, the East Plan and the recently adopted, uh, Rowan County Working Act Lands Plan. It's reasonable and appropriate based on the following. It creates a legislative process. It supports measures to protect and promote working forest and farmland. Encourages agribusiness and natural resources as related to the industry. It encourages entrepreneurship in our community. Exceeded my three minutes by quite a few, but I'll be glad to answer any other questions. Any questions? So we do need to have a public hearing. Um, a couple of folks are here that, that may just want to be recognized and supported, uh, or oppose it. But, um, you know, you've, you've got a recommendation as well. So, thanks.
All right, um, we'll open the floor for a public hearing. We do have one person that signed up. James, could you pronounce your last name? James Meacham, uh, Tourism Authority.
Uh, board of commissioners, uh, first of all, I want to thank you guys for taking this under consideration and a special thanks to the planning staff, county attorney that really worked diligently to review this over a series of months. The biggest thing we would emphasize is we think this is a strong middle ground between the first language and one of the first words that was presented was options. It's for giving farms that have had generational farms in Rowan County, well before any of us were here, the ability to not only protect the bona fide farm, but also expand their economic development opportunities. Agritourism was largely adopted as a, a permissible use by the state of North Carolina and many other states years ago in an effort to protect the farms. How can we let farmers supplement income and survive and thrive over the years? And we've seen that play out successfully. Addition to that, this is trying to help us level the playing field with other counties across North Carolina. There are many counties that just kind of let it go and they let a farm do what they want to do and move down there. We don't think that's the appropriate route here. We think the, the the boundaries and the framework that staff have put in place are very sound and effective and give us those tools that you as a county government would need to administer this, but still giving the farmers the options. And I think that's the other thing I want to emphasize. It doesn't require any bona fide farm to do this. If they want to expand their agritourism operations, it gives them the ability to do this. And it's kind of the natural progression moving forward. Additionally, in some of the areas, whether it's amusements or whether it's, uh, alcohol and sales, there are state governing bodies that support those, especially whether it's ALE and there's a process you have to go through that. And the amusements, Commissioner Clusman, you bring up is a good point. There are farms just passionate that do small amusements. They may want to get into recreational things such as zip lines or climbing towers, things that kind of add that outdoor recreational farming experience. I think many of us would feel compliment farms and compliment what we're trying to do from a tourism and an economic development perspective here. At the end of the day, from our standpoint, it's about providing options, supporting those farmers, helping them grow jobs, helping them grow revenue to support their businesses and keeping those generational farms in place. Uh, that's why the Tourism Authority took this under our consideration. Also, we like the broad aspect of it, that it does give these farms the ability to expand into different areas that help them grow so that they can stay a farm for the next hundred years. Uh, so thank you again for your time. We appreciate you guys taking this under consideration. Again, a, a big, uh, thank you to Shane and Ed for just their time and attention to this and especially county attorney as well. They really looked at this with a broad, uh, broad scope and also looking at how does this work and how can we make it adapt to Rowan County? Thank you again.
Thank you, James. Uh, anybody else? Anybody else like to speak? If we don't have any, we'll close the public hearing and would someone like to offer up the?
I will.
Okay.
Like this in the form of a motion. The ZTA 01-23 is consistent with the Western Land, Western, West Rowan Land Use Plan and the East Rowan Land Use Plan and the Rowan County Working Agricultural Lands Plan and is reasonable and appropriate based on the following. Number one, it creates, it creates a legislative process. Two, supports some measures to protect and promote the working forest and farmlands. And number three, encourages agribusiness and natural resources as related to the industry. And number four, encourages entrepreneurship in our community.
All right, it's a motion. We have a second? Second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then do we have a motion to approve ZTA 01-23? And a second? Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's kind of a big, I don't think most folks here know how big a deal this is. This has been going on for a hun, what, 128 years? Seems like this will put some structure into what we're doing. And thank you, Jay. And Planning Board, Shane and Ed, really, really, really appreciate this. And thank you to some of the farmers who have reached out. I know to Jim and to myself, and we've spent time with folks and won't name any names, but it's been a long, long, long process. Not, James, you said a few months. It's been years. Yeah, anyway, appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Scott? Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners, for agreeing to hear this request today from Macy's. And again, this is an incentive revision request. I know everybody here is familiar with the Macy's project, but just to hit the high points real fast, in January of last year, the board approved an incentive grant for Macy's. And at this, at that time, the incentive was based on the company's pleasure to create 2,500 full-time jobs, 2,600 part-time jobs, and invest over $584 million into a new 1.4 million square foot distribution center. I'm sure some of you have been on 85 headed to Charlotte and seen that very large building going up right now. At the time, it was the largest, it still is the largest economic development announcement in the county's history. But since that time, Macy's has finalized its payroll and investment plans for the new facility. In their words, "to reflect current market conditions and technological advances." And upon finalizing these plans, the company's informed us of the following changes to the project's scope. So now, by the end of 2030, they're pledged to create 1,317 jobs full-time, 383 part-time jobs, and 2,260 seasonal jobs. Another change is the average salary for these new full-time jobs. It's going to rise nearly 19% from 37.6 to 44.6. And also, more good news, the total investment is going to increase from 584.3 million to 640.6 million. So back in January of last year, the board approved a 15-year incentive grant for the project, equivalent to 80% of the new taxes paid on both real and personal property. And based on that original investment of 584.3 million, we estimated at the time the project would generate about 34 million in total tax revenue to the county. The total value of the incentive grant would be 27.2 million, which will lead to a net tax revenue to the county of $6.8 million during this incentive period. So with the changes in the project's scope, Macy's has proposed a modification to the grant terms you approved last year. This modification would be a reduction in the incentive grant percentage, going from 80% down to 70%. They're proposing the length of the incentive term remain at 15 years. And so you've seen the fiscal impact of this, these changes. And of course, since they're going to be investing 56.3 million more into the project, it's going to result in a corresponding increase in the incentive grant amount and the county's net tax revenue, even though there's going to be a reduction or they're proposing a reduction in the grant percentage. So what we're estimating now is a total tax revenue during the incentive period of 41.5 million. Again, total value of the incentive grant would go up to 29.1, but also net tax revenue to the county would increase to 12.4 million. That's an increase of 5.6 million total during that time. And also, I included in your packet a draft incentive agreement. And since that time, I've had conversations with Macy's representatives. And they've asked that the board consider the incentive terms of this meeting, but asked that we pull the draft agreement for consideration until a future meeting, maybe next meeting or the following, sometime within the next 30 days, just to refine that document a little bit more. So we're not coming back to you yet again with, with more changes. So after the public hearing, what we're asking the board to consider is a modification to the incentive grant terms, reducing that percentage from 80% down to 70%. And in closing, as I mentioned earlier, Macy's recreate about 1,300 full-time jobs, 383 part-time jobs, and 2,260 seasonal jobs by 2030. Again, average salary would increase by 19%. Total investment would go up to 640.1 million dollars. And there'd be about 12.4 million in net tax revenue to the county during this period. And again, despite these changes, it would still be the largest announcement in county history. And again, I thank you for considering this request and be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Scott? I don't have any questions, just kind of a statement. Jim and I have been meeting with the EDC and with Macy's folks. I don't know, it's been a couple of months, maybe, yeah. So I think what's generated this, my understanding is Macy's is using a different, I don't know what to call them, a technology designer. And so they are adding significant technology to the interior of this facility. And that's what's causing the $55 million increase. And, but it's more efficient and that, that's affecting the number of employees that they would initially have. We've also been doing labor study and they know that in order to get folks to work in the market, they're going to have to raise already, raise wages. And so that's a good thing for us. So we sat down with them and and talked to them about what we thought would be fair. And that's, that's what we came up with. There's additional things we're talking to them about. Certainly Macy's will need management teams over the next coming decades. So we're working with local colleges. We don't know what that looks like yet, but they're going to hire management folks from somewhere. And so one of the benefits of Rowan County is we have good colleges. And so we're working directly with Macy's and our local colleges to come up with some type of training program where we can, we can have folks coming straight out of our local colleges and going to work in Macy's and management positions. So we're working through that, try to figure out how to make that happen. But they've given us a thumbs up on that. It's gone up through 20 layers of management, I think, but they, they are good on that. And so we'll work through to see what that looks like.
And just to elaborate on what the chairman said, yeah, our understanding was another group was brought in to design this facility and they'd made changes in the building's layout, operational processes, equipment to be installed, things like that. And that's what led to these new employment numbers and investment. One interesting thing about it with the investment is the, the difference, the 584 million to 640, there's also going to be an increase in the real property investment, more so than the equipment, which is going to lead to more stabilization as far as tax revenue to the county. It won't be the equipment depreciation that we all see with these large-scale, you know, equipment investments. So that's, that's more good news as far as the investment goes.
They added a Chewy.
Basically.
Chewy was 55 million, yeah. So they added a Chewy to this.
Yeah. Yeah. So just for example, the investment in building and land is going to go up from 179 million to about 253 million. So that's going to be pretty stable revenue for the county.
Also stated that they want to be a good corporate citizen when they get here and that they're going to be involved in things like United Way. They're going to make investments in the community, which we don't know exactly how that's going to go, but they, they really want to be, be part of the community rather than somebody taking advantage of of a particular location. So I think we'll see, I think we'll see other things just besides the change in the tax incentive at this point.
All right, anything else? We'll open the floor to a public hearing if we do have anyone that would like to comment on this. All right, don't see any, so I'll close the public comment. And all we're going to do tonight, since we don't have, we won't be voting on the the actual, what do we call it, relocation and expansion agreement, we're, we're voting on the parameters of it, which is simply changing the from 80% downgrading that to 70% over 15 years. And then everything else stays the same, correct? Okay. All right, I'll make that motion. Do we have a second? All right. Any other discussion? And thank you, Commissioners. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well, thank you. Anna?
Hi.
Don't mess it up.
I don't want to. So we'll start with the, I think she had that right. March cumulative expenditures report. So these are up about 5.6 million or approximately 4.9% over FY '22. Questions on that?
Said expenditure, but that's revenue, right?
That just moved to revenues. She needs to just.
Sorry.
Sorry. Yeah, there's expenditures. Now we'll flip to revenue. The revenues are up 26.2 million or 19.7% through March also.
So is there an asterisk in there? What's that?
That is, well, 10 million is ARBA. That's the big number. We had, we had some sale or some property. No, that was the inspections, right? And then 8 million is the radio financing, so that we got that revenue, right? We've got all that revenue this year. And then we'll have the debt payments in the future. Yeah. There's probably a few other. Yes. You recognize the revenue all at one time. Yes. So moving to property tax, this is through February, so we're up about 3.2 million or 3.8%. Onto the cumulative sales tax. So this is through December, about 2.3 million that were up or 12.5%. And then the month over month, it was, December was up over FY '22, about 316,000 or 8.9%. The last, so I think the last update I had from Chip was 18.7? 18.7 billion was the last estimate I had from Chip. Um, I do not have that with me, but I can find out.
We can get a.
We can get that for you.
Get a report.
Because it's on his spreadsheet that he did, but I haven't looked at where it was. Yeah.
I was with Chip Friday and I asked him how the rebau was going. And he said that we've had about 3% of Rowan County folks have appealed. So on 80,000 properties, that's about 2,400. I asked him then, if folks aren't satisfied at that level, then they go to the zoning board of adjustment, which is currently meeting. And how many have moved on from the appeal to the zoning board of adjustment? And he said less than 100. So that's, that's good news. So folks are satisfied leaving, you know, the staff level appeals and only a few, a very small number. Moving on to ZBA appeals.
I also had my investment report, quarterly investment.
Oh.
I think it's a separate PDF. This is through March 31st. Guys want me to read this or just hit the highlights here? So basically, your today interest is about 2.4 million on these investments. Of course, you know, interest rates are very good right now on these items compared to where they were. And then.
Is that NCCMT? Is that that state fund?
That's the North Carolina Capital Management Trust, yes. So those funds are all fairly liquid for us. As you can see, they have a one day, we can request them and get them. It's the treasuries and stuff that sometimes have a little bit longer life, so.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Let's see, then we've got board appointments. I'll move through these. Ellis Cross Country Volunteer Fire Department Fire Commissioners, we have three openings. John Allen Evans, Aaron Meany, and Connie McLean have applied, motion to accept these three. Second, all in favor, say aye. JCPC Jocelyn, Jocelyn Williams applied for mental health seat. Ryan Bravo applied for youth underage 21 seat. Todd Wirick applied for general public seat. And Honorable Beth Spencer applied for chief district court judge seat. Motion to approve all of these. All in favor, say aye. County Town of Rockwell Planning and Zoning ETJ Kyler Eagle, Richard Terrell Senior applied for two ETJ seats. Motion and a second for those. All in favor, say aye. Woodley Volunteer Fire Department Fire Commissioners, there's three openings and three applications. Tim Moore, Adam Taylor, and Kay Gregory have applied, motion to accept those three. All in favor, say aye. Motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Thank you all.